So it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order if Phil can lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for all the blessings of life. God, we just thank you, Lord, for this wonderful community that you allow us to live in, to work in. God, I just pray, Lord, that as we go into this business meeting for the city, Lord, that you would bless the elected officials, the employees, and all the citizens of the city of Coming. And God just bless all the decisions we make to be, to honor you, Lord. Now go with us. Lead, God, direct us, watch over us in our daily walks, and please grant us traveling graces back to our homes this evening. As many favors and blessings we ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If anyone will join us in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to consider the agenda for adoption. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries five oh. Item five, considering for adopting the following meeting minutes. Item A, the regular meeting of July 18th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Can I vote?
Everybody try again. There we go. Motion carries five oh. Item B, executive session meeting of July 18th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion Phil Doc.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries five oh. Item six, there is none. Item seven, there is none. Item eight, under new business, police, we have a swearing in of a new officer. If you want to come forward.
Hi, this is Officer Chris Vertiller. He has over a decade of law enforcement experience. He comes from Dawson County Sheriff's Office. And we're just going to do a swearing in for him right here. I, Chris Vertiller, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, on the duties imposed upon me as a police officer of the City of Coming, Georgia, that I will, to best my ability, discharge the duties thereof and conserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Georgia. I swear that I am not a holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which I am subjectively from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia, nor am I a holder of any account for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I further swear that I will enforce the criminal laws of the State of Georgia and ordinance of the City of Coming, that I abide by the rules governing the City of Coming Police Department, adhere to the law enforcement code of ethics, and uphold the ethics code of the City of Coming in doing so. I will be mindful of the trust that has been placed in me to improve the quality of life and make every effort to live up to that trust. I will not perjure, condemn, nor help to shield the guilty, nor will I be influenced and discharged of my duties by fear, favor, or affection, reward, for the hope thereof. So.
I do.
Okay. And today, Chris is white maggot, and his two kids, Lily and Briar, are going to come up and hand his badge.
Congratulations. Then next, we have the swearing in of police department chaplain.
Okay, so a little bit about, come on up here. This is Chaplain Kent Safright. He's a member of Coming Baptist Church. He's part of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office Chaplain Program and wanted to extend his services to the City of Coming Police Department. As a chaplain, his services are completely voluntary, and he is not compensated for his time. Police chaplains support officers struggling with issues such as burnout, stress, and trauma. Chaplains can also be used to give family death notifications and to support victims of crimes if they need assistance. We appreciate Chaplain Safright for joining the police department. We're thankful for his service. We're just going to do a little swearing in for him.
As a law enforcement chaplain, I will perform all law enforcement procedures and support applicable. Be available while on duty, sent dispatch at all times, completed by radio or telephone. Not publicly criticize the activity of law enforcement officers, department officials, public chaplain, or department policy or action. Hold all information received from the strictest confidence. Be an advisor and guide in all matters pertaining to moral, spiritual, and religious welfare of the law enforcement personnel. Hold the badge that I carry with the highest regard against any moral and ethical values, whether on or off.
So we want both of you guys to know how much we appreciate you coming on board and helping the City of Coming. Next, under administration, we have a presentation from Kathy Papa with Department of Community Affairs about the Georgia Rural Workforce Housing Initiative.
Thank you very much. Good to see you guys. Yeah, as mentioned, I'm the Department of Community Affairs Regional Representative, Kathy Papa, and I serve a 13 county area, which includes Forsyth County and the City of Coming. And just to give you a quick overview of DCA and what we do, we are the state's community development arm and housing agency, and we help communities build their vision for economic development, growth, and success. We have three core areas. That's safe and affordable housing, community and economic development, and local government assistance. But my purpose today is to talk to you about the Georgia Rural Workforce Housing Program. And there's a quote from Governor Kemp. So the purpose of the program is to help communities address their workforce housing needs. It was developed by the state legislature last year. There was actually a study committee that was created jointly between the Senate and the House of the Legislature to study, you know, the needs in Georgia for workforce housing. And the governor actually recommended funding for this program, and the total amount of funds is $35 million. Twenty-five million of that is for single-family home development and 10 million for rental housing. And the funding is housed at the Department of Community Affairs through the One Georgia Authority. So that's kind of a breakdown of the funds there on that slide. And as I mentioned, the purpose of the Rural Workforce Housing Initiative is to assist communities with housing developments to address housing shortages, especially to benefit the local workforce. And there are grant funds, uh, excuse me, go back. There are grant funds available up to $2.5 million to local governments to assist with the development of infrastructure to support workforce housing. That can be either rental or single-family home development. There are also loan funds available to developers in partnership with communities to build just single-family homes, not rental. And here's the eligibility map. Both conditionally and fully eligible counties are eligible for this program. So the City of Coming is fully eligible. The only communities in the state that are not eligible are those within that core area of metro Atlanta. So no match is required for the program. However, any community submitting an application, it will score higher if there is match provided, because it shows a local commitment to the project. So this kind of shows what I was talking about. $2.5 million is available in grants for infrastructure, and then 1 million in loans to developers. So as far as eligible applicants, cities and counties and development authorities are eligible. Whether building single-family homes for sale or rentals, the price, let me go to the next slide. The price must be between $125,000 and $290,000 per unit and have at least two bedrooms. Rental rates must be affordable to households earning up to 100% of area median income. And so the affordability is based on a 30% of average household income. And the reason we came up with that number is because people are considered cost burdened if they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. So the maximum rent price is 30% of the area median income. And I have that data for you for the City of Coming. Our Housing Division at the Department of Community Affairs, our Office of Housing Development put those figures together for me. So the median household income for the City of Coming is $63,438. So at 30% a month, like 30% would be 1762 a month. And that's actually higher than the median rent currently in the city, which is 1,123. And like I said, that's based on data sources provided by our Housing Division.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, yes, of course. The City of Coming's area median income is, at 100%, is $63,438. So 30% at a monthly rate would be 1762 per month. All right, moving on. So the infrastructure grant applications are, can be submitted on a quarterly basis, but the first step is to submit an initial project assessment or a pre-application. And the city has done that, and they submitted it within the deadline. And the city has also provided the full application as well, which was, had to be submitted by July 14th for this previous round. As I said, it's quarterly, so the next opportunity to apply would be October 13th. Applications are on a quarterly basis. And if successful, all of the funds that would come to the city to help with the infrastructure costs, because that's what the city was looking at applying for, to support the infrastructure, to support housing, all of that infrastructure would need to be built out within two years. So that's the award period, is two years. So, as I mentioned, the application deadline was July 14th, and that was submitted in time. The city also must be up to date on all planning and reporting requirements through the Department of Community Affairs. That's like comprehensive plans, different surveys that we require, and the city's totally fine there. No, no, not out of compliance at all, so that's good. We also recommend that cities and counties can complete a housing needs assessment, and we can provide suggestions for that. I would definitely recommend looking at your comprehensive plan, and it is in your comprehensive plan, the need for workforce housing. So, so like I said, the first step is to check compliance. The city's in compliance. Schedule a meeting, which we had a month or so back with some of the leadership of the city, and then submit that initial project assessment, which the city has done. And then we would, based on the decision of the council, we'd be willing to send some staff from DCA out to do a site visit to discuss the application further. So that's kind of where it's at right now. But I guess the takeaway is, just to kind of go back to my beginning of the presentation, as far as the purpose of the program, is to provide workforce housing. And it's really a public-private partnership. And in this case, the private sector is really leading the way in terms of investment. Most of the investment is by the private sector, and that would definitely be the case here, because the housing development would be privately owned. The city would just be supporting the infrastructure needs to the project. Also, I know there's been a question about potential for Section 8 financing. I've checked with our housing staff. We have no intention of doing that. We don't even have any Section 8 financing available for this particular program. And if there ever was any Section 8 funding that could potentially come to the city, the city would know about it and could object to it and prevent it. So I can assure you of that. Lastly, I would just like to share, as I stated at the beginning, about the, about the program and the governor's push to make this happen. A lot of that is driven by the Georgia Department of Economic Development, as well as the Georgia Economic Developers Association. Both of those organizations have made workforce housing their top issue for this year. So they're really wanting to see businesses get the support they need to provide the housing for their workers. We have so many businesses moving to Georgia, as you guys are probably aware, and many businesses are expanding, and they're complaining all the time, there's no place for our workers to live. And we're seeing that on a small business level as well. And y'all have a tremendous new city center. You have a lot of growth in the city. I would guess that if you polled the businesses in your city center, they would be very happy to see a development like this, to provide support to their workers to have a close place to live and work. Also, I'm hearing from a lot of city and county governments in the region that they have staff that are going outside of the city and taking jobs, or the county, taking jobs in the private sector, because they just can't afford to continue to work for a city or county based on the lack of housing. So it's obviously a very important issue. I applaud the city for trying to address it, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
So it goes even more than just workers for the private sector. I did a bus tour with Coming Elementary. Their principal and all their teachers, where they drove through not only the City of Coming, but also in the county, the area that they serve. And then in talking with teachers on the bus ride, you know, several of them are like, I'm having to live in Dawson County, and I'm still paying 1,800 a month for a one-bedroom apartment. You know, they're right out of college, they're single, and it's, they can't live here, and they can barely afford to live in the next county.
That's exactly right.
But at the same time, they're going to spend their money in Dawson County, where they're living, when they go shop and all that, so.
Right.
It's not helping our local economy.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If the median income here is 53,438.
It was actually 63, but yeah.
That's what?
63,438.
63?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I can't hear. Okay. What if you make 38?
Then you're, then you should even spend like half that much. So it would be down to like.
So it's income controlled, income based?
Well, no, no, we're not looking at people's incomes in this program, other than to say the maximum amount that the apartments could be leased for would be that.
Would be 1,700. But you could lease them for a lot less.
Yeah, you could. It's just.
If you wanted to take income into consideration.
Willing to do that, but yeah.
Okay, suppose you get a developer, and they come in and they get the two-and-a-half million dollar grant, and maybe they borrow the other million, you can't borrow a million, and then they have to borrow more money, of course, to do this development. What do they get out of it? What do they really make out of this project?
Right. Well, in this case, it would be a grant to the city to pay for the infrastructure to support the development. Because as you can imagine, to build out a fairly large-scale apartment complex or apartment units, there's land costs, there's infrastructure costs, there's permitting costs, there's engineering costs, there's so many costs, as you're alluding to. So to have to not, so if a developer doesn't have to worry about the infrastructure, then it's more likely they're willing to do the project. So that's a positive for the developer. But yeah, like I said at the beginning, this is private sector-driven, so it will be a huge investment by the developer.
How many houses would be sold versus how many would be rented?
In this case, it's all rental. There's not an interest in this particular program right now, but y'all could apply at another time to do for-sale homes.
But this would be all rental. About how many houses?
I didn't study the city's application in that much detail, but yeah. I'm not positive on that.
What are?
What happens after 10 years? Because I know after 10 years, you don't have to, you don't have to go by the guideline.
Price could go back up, yeah. And I checked on that today because I was curious myself. That's a lot to ask, to maintain that rental rate for 10 years. But it can be adjusted by inflation, and also if the city's area median income goes up, it can be adjusted for that as well. So probably 2% to 3% it can be adjusted.
So under what metric do you decide, well, they could go up? Your stats on median income, like where does, where do you access?
Yeah.
And how often is the median income studied?
It's every year. It's through the census, yeah. Yeah, we can provide it for you. But, and you know, if the developer didn't want to raise the rent, that's fine too, but there's that option, just to make it more plausible.
But you said it could be income-based, right?
Well, no, in this case, that's the max. So regardless of who's going to rent it, that's going to be the maximum rental.
I know. That's the max, but it could be a lot less.
If it's up to the developer. So, yeah. We're not going to dictate that at all.
What are some of the municipal or county qualifications for the grants? Like what are you guys looking for, for who, how deciding who gets what money?
Sure. Well, I think one advantage y'all might have by submitting under this first round, which is kind of what the plan was, there's not that many applying yet, so competition's not too bad. But we're looking for capability, the ability for the city to follow through. I mean, obviously, y'all have a strong track record of doing developments. Look at the city center. I mean, y'all put in all the infrastructure for that, so the capability's there, the commitment to the project, you know, the fact that the city would be assisting with the land, you know, there's truly a strong commitment to it. That's kind of what we're looking for, and the capability and the plan, so.
So why are cities putting up the land?
Well, I'm not sure the degree of that, but there's some discussion of that, yeah, to contribute to the project, yeah.
Is there, and I don't know if you know the answer, if it'd be a legal question, but is there any way that a development like this, that the tenants, the renters in there, would be required that they work in the county that the development is in?
I would love that, because that's who you want to target, absolutely. We can't do that. There's something about fair housing where you can't like single people out and make sure they meet that requirement. But you can certainly market it to your businesses and just work with the developer to make sure that's who he's targeting. There's ways to do it, but yeah, you can't like officially do that.
And I know you just said that after 10 years, the prices could be adjusted. So how long a development like this, how long would it be classified under this, this program that you guys would keep track of?
The 10 years. That's it, the 10 years. Yeah, yeah.
And then it is just however the private developer, or the owner at that time wants to operate it.
Totally up to that person, or that company, yeah.
They could sell it after 10 years.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, what if we put up land as part of our deal to get you to come? Didn't we lose it?
Well, that would be an agreement the city would have with the developer. Y'all could work that out, I'm sure.
The city and the developer, the.
Yeah, and there's stipulations the city could put on the development as well, so.
What are the reasons for the eligibility, non-eligibility, and conditional eligibility? How did you determine that?
Oh, that, yeah. Okay, that's, that's part of our One Georgia Authority. And some counties are considered more rural than others. I can go back to that map if you like. But, so yeah, so Forsyth County, because it's growing so rapidly, it's not really considered rural anymore. I mean, certainly the north end of the county would be considered more rural.
I see it's kind of cut off. The north end's probably in the dark green eligible area.
Right. So that's, yeah, that's the difference. But for this program, we are considering those light green counties as fully eligible.
So it's, but it's basically based on your people per square mile or something like that?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
The reason I asked about some of the qualifications for grants, we have a fairly, I think you said, a strong rental market in the city now as far as, didn't you say the median rental rates are like 1,300? Low, right.
Yes, low, yeah.
But I don't know where those are.
So I think, I think 60%, what I saw in the last census was like 60% of our housing units are rental.
Really?
In the city now. So I was, I was just curious what some of the qualifications were for who you guys choose to implement the program with.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind, this is targeting the missing middle, so we're not, this is not low income. That's not who we're targeting with this program. We're truly targeting people that have jobs, that are contributing members of your community.
But you can't, you can't differentiate that.
No, you can't, but that's why the, you're not going to see the rent super low.
And this is a brand-new program?
It is.
Is, who, can you say who else is?
Applying?
Applying or has implemented something similar or anything like that?
The only other community in my region that's applying is Stevens County, and theirs is also for rental. And they're putting in sewer, to provide sewer for the project.
Do you know, do you have any reasons why other counties or cities might not be applying? Is it just too new or?
Probably. That's part of it, yeah. And then some, you know, I have a lot of really small counties and cities that don't have the capability, so.
But a lot of counties may be like us and have a lot of rental.
Right, that's a good point.
And therefore, they don't need more rental.
Yeah.
Do, do you know of any other states that, or that this has been modeled after, where there's any case studies?
That's a good question.
Or you guys developed it on your own?
I don't, but I can ask. I can definitely ask. I would think our staff, you know, and the governor's office probably did do research. And certainly that workforce housing committee with the state legislature did a lot of research, so I can definitely check. That's a good question.
So I was, I read the comp plan too, I think, about the housing needs this week. It seemed to me that indicated more like with some of the new development on the horizon, that there could be a potential for more workforce housing in the future, but it didn't seem to indicate that it was a dire need in the city now, considering most of our housing is aging housing now. We have approved a few things that are not complete yet.
Right.
As far as new build. So I was just curious if you saw something different than a.
No, that's, I just saw that it was referenced. So that's kind of the minimum that we ask for, to make sure it's part of your plan.
So do you think that study that our consultant did for that comp plan update would be enough for the housing needs assessment? Or you think we should probably look into doing that?
Yeah, I can't speak to that 100%, but I would think the more you can beef it up, the better, to prove, you know, the need.
The better for what, the application and potentially getting money?
Yeah.
All right. Do you have a recommendation on who?
Who can do it?
Yeah.
I know at our previous meeting, we discussed utilizing some other data.
The United Way has a study on, on the housing needs, not, it's not city-specific, it's for the whole county.
Yeah, I know. That's why I was thinking that, because the county has very little rental housing, or really workforce-type housing at all. The city has carried the load for that, and that's why I was curious as to, if there's any studies about the county and city as a whole.
No, but I'm sure, like the mayor said, there's some studies that you can maybe rely on to look at, or maybe expand upon those.
But I get one more question. If you, if you worked at McDonald's here and your income was $30,000 and you applied for a home to rent, could you get one?
Well, you're not going to apply through us.
I mean, you're going to apply through the developer, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, could you get one?
It depends on the developer.
All the DCA would be doing, Linda, is to, they would cap what the developer can charge. So the developer could take a lesser amount.
Who's the DCA development?
Them.
Here, okay. You're just going to cap the maximum amount, not the minimum amount.
Yeah, the developer can choose.
So the developer then would decide if they would give any other discounts to anybody else, based on any other factors that they wanted to in signing a lease agreement.
And that money is 1,700 and something dollars that the developer could charge?
Yes, yes.
So that's within what rental rates we are currently seeing for apartments and such.
Yeah.
It's actually less when you look at, you're saying it had to be a two-bedroom, right?
Yep.
So a two-bedroom now, the foundry's 2,200, 2,300. So it is less than.
The only thing that bothers me is he could sell it in 10 years.
Yeah, he could.
So the developer couldn't sell it while in this program?
No.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it has to stay in place.
Does the DCA provide, do they do any auditing of the developer, or of the development during that 10-year period?
I would think so. All of our grant programs, we have. All of our grant programs, we have reporting requirements and monitoring, so I would think so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Kathy?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind, do you have, does Phil have your contact information?
Yeah.
And all that?
Yeah, I'll grab my card.
All right, great, thank you.
So moving on to utilities, report of proposals for grading of newly acquired property on Mountain Road.
Yes, Ms. Kathy had a beautiful presentation on the beautiful new system that the council installed, so maybe next time I'll do better. This is still just on paper, so. So we had three quotes to do the site work on Kelly Mill Road, our eleven acres, and we're just requesting to go with a low bid from Jasper Grading to get the site work done. And the low bid is four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The high bid was from Vertical Earth at seven hundred and ten thousand and eleven dollars. So we're asking to go with a low bid from Jasper Grading and Pipeline.
Are there any questions or discussions for John?
I'll make a motion to approve the low bid by Jasper Grading.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries five vote. Next, number two, request to approve consulting engineering firms.
Yes, we did an RFQ and asked for presentations from firms. We had seven engineering firms that we interviewed, and we've gone through those and come up with seven that we'd like to approve, and they are listed in, in the memo. So we're asking the council to approve those seven firms, so that we can bid out engineering services each time that we want to design a project, if that makes sense.
You think that'll help you get a better bid?
I do, I think that it's good to have competition. I think the city does, we bid out things competitively already. Well, we do RFQs, but the same, it's the same kind of process. So to be able to go with multiple consulting firms and ask them for prices to design specific projects, to manage them, to do surveying, and all those things that they do, I believe the competition's going to be good, and it's going to bring our engineering costs down.
How many of these have we worked with in the past, I know Forsyth?
We've worked with two. The first one, Civil Engineering Consultants Incorporated, and Forsyth Group, we've used them for roads. Civil Engineering is water and sewer, and Forsyth's been roads. They also do some infrastructure work. I think many times, you know, when we're doing road projects, that we could integrate maybe some of the water and sewer with the Forsyth Group, you know, because they're already out there doing surveying and all that.
How did you choose the others?
Ma'am?
How did you choose the others?
Well, we went through a RFQ process, where we advertised and we went through, and we had a, like a committee in, in the Department of Utilities, and we all sat down and went through all their qualifications and looked at them. And you know, some of these firms are really heavy on plant work, like they build water plants, wastewater plants, and things like that. Others are maybe heavier on the pipe work, like, you know, linear projects. So we, we chose out of all those, the ones that have those different types of experience, so that we could, you know, bid out, we knew they, they were qualified to do that type of work for us. So after we went through that, then we did interviews, and the firms came, and we, we had them give us a presentation that explained some of the projects that they had constructed, and we looked at those and determined which ones we felt were qualified, you know, given the size of our utility, and so that's how we chose.
These different firms have a different...
Expertise, maybe?
Expertise.
Yes, ma'am, I would say they do.
So that, when something comes up, you've got one you can...
Yes, ma'am, that's true, and I feel like that we could bid, you know, multiple firms to do a specific project, let's say a water plant expansion, you know. We've talked about that, that's upcoming. We know that it's maybe a forty or fifty million dollar project, so, you know, it could be fifteen percent for engineering, you know, about eight percent for design, maybe eight percent for the management part. That's a lot of money. So we want to go out, because it's such a big expense to the city, and kind of figure out, you know, not only are they qualified to do it, but what are they going to do it for, what is the cost going to be? So that's, and then we did, you know, we went through, we had twelve, so we pared it down to seven, and we kept the ones that we have, too. We do want to continue to work with them. This is also a requirement of Jifa. You know, we went through all the Jifa loans and, and all that that we have. So to get the engineering costs put into the loan, we had to go through this process.
Well, I make a motion that we accept this following seven firms to assist you with your projects.
Second. Please vote. Motion carries five vote.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Number three, access easement to Triple Road Pump Station.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a situation where we had an access easement to a pump station on Triple Road out in the western part of the county, where we just came straight in on the easement. The underlying fee, the land has been sold for a development, and what this agreement is, is it's an agreement whereby we're going to release our current access easement, and they're going to build us a new road to get into the development using the infrastructure they're going to put in place. During this time period that they're putting in their roads, they're required to maintain our access, they're required to provide us with three-phase power, they're required to make sure that our diesel trucks can get there. All of this is just to make sure that we don't have any kind of interruption while the underlying land is sold. In essence, we're helping the, the property owner, who we got the easement from years ago, to develop their land, and we're going to get a better access easement on the back end. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions or discussion? We have a motion?
A motion for the, to allow the access easement at Triple Road Pump Station, as presented.
Do they need to add in Kevin for the mayor to sign it, or does that cover it?
When it's approved, you'll be able to sign it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries five vote. Number four, request to purchase a dump truck.
So Mayor and Council, back in December of 2022, council approved, and I went ahead and stuck that in there from that meeting, my memo to the council. The council approved purchasing a Chevy 5500 service truck in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four sixteen, twenty-nine, and we ordered it from Chevrolet, and they called us a few weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, and said they've canceled the order. So we tried to reorder it, and it's not available to be ordered, and we've tried to find another one through that dealership and couldn't. So the, just about the only thing we could find was a, I think it's a 5500, or is it, is that what, is that, is that right? Okay. C-5500 four-by-four heavy-duty body diesel service truck from Jackie Jones, and this one is a Dodge, so the mayor will be happy about that.
Well, not the seven thousand dollars more, I'm not...
And inflation has pushed that price up, so that was the only one we could find to replace the one that we lost through that ordering system, so I'm...
They give any reason why they couldn't fill that?
No, I really didn't get a good reason. Those trucks are really odd right now. We've had trouble with Ford, Chevrolet, just, you know, being able to obtain the trucks that we need, so, and this is just another one of those crazy things that's happened.
Any questions or discussion?
This is a dump?
This one is a service body, so it has, you know, and the thing about, one of the reasons it's more expensive is that the metal in that service body is a thicker gauge metal, and they have better bearings, you know, because they have drawers that pull out and doors that swing open, and those are heavier duty than the other one that we were looking at, so...
But that's different from a service truck.
Well, it is a service truck, it's got the service body, that's like a big square box on the back, and they have doors on the side where you put like, let's say, fittings, meters, curb stops, those things that are real heavy copper and brass and all those things, so, and then all the tools they carry. So these things carry, you know, a lot of heavy pieces and parts when they're repairing the water system, if that makes sense.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion?
I make a motion that we purchase the ninety-two thousand dollar C-55 truck from Jackie Jones of Cleveland.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries five vote.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, John. Announcements, there are none, executive session.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries five vote.